Hey. Hey, Amara.
Hi.
Okay, I think we have everybody.
Yep, Anne's here. I'm having internet issues, so I'll show my face when I can get that squared away.
Okay. Jeff, are you outside, or is that just the background?
You're muted.
You're still muted.
It's okay. It's okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, let's...
I was saying, I've got your county jail right in my background, so I can look at it every day.
Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful.
Be impressed, yeah.
Okay. Well, I think we're all here, so we should get started, and I think what would be good is for us to maybe just quickly recap where we left off, and then I know Tamara, you've got some things, and we can kind of open it up to see if the city has anything before we proceed. So I think where we left off, we came, generally got through, we get through all of the items, yep, generally got through all of the items, and I think the mayor let us know that he had some ideas about a task force, and I think this group expressed reservation about a task force. And so if anybody has any news about any of that, we can start with that and maybe plan a schedule for moving forward. Is that reasonable, Tamara?
Yeah, I think so.
So we'll kick it over to our friends in the municipal government.
Well, this is Brad. I assume that everyone had heard about it, maybe the resolution we passed at our last council meeting, but I sent it out just a little while ago. Sorry, I should have thought of that sooner. But it really did try to, it did try to address each of the seven issues, and in some cases, where we are on those. And for the three, there's the public negotiations, the decriminalize minor marijuana and other lesser crimes, and the qualified immunity. It goes on to say that we are, we have tasked City Manager's Office and our city attorney to look at those and determine what might be possible, what role we can play. So we're waiting on those issues. The other one on the Citizens Review Board, next week, I expect City Council will take action to establish a community task force to research and develop and make a recommendation for the policy and structure for a citizen review board. Several people who are in this meeting will be asked to serve on that task force, and it will include a strong group of citizens throughout our community, and I think that that will help get great input, and it will also be viewed by our entire community as a group of people who all care and are recognized as people who care about these issues, and we're excited about it. So there'll be more details. We're still finalizing some things, but will be more details next week.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold my comments, because I think that would be better for, and more constructive for this conversation. I guess, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you taking the initiative to select a group of individuals without the input of this group, but before I comment any further, I will turn it over to anybody else representing the advocates for social justice to see if they have any remarks or response.
Well, if nobody else has anything to say, I certainly do. So as I mentioned in my email, the advocates for social justice and the core group of people who I sent the sort of roster, and even within that, we have a subgroup that has already started to do a lot of the research and look into community review boards or citizens review boards. We've looked at them across the nation and have already started outlining what we think one should look like here in Cedar Rapids. So, you know, I mean, I think I already stated this in my email, that you have a group of people who represent the community and who are certainly, you know, dedicated to these issues and want to work together on getting this done. So it feels a little bit like a slap in the face to, you know, as I said, to sort of unilaterally decide who's going to be on this task force, and when you have a group of people who are already willing to do the work and who are working on it. So I guess that's all I really have to say on that.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Tamara.
Of the mayor specifically, but city officials in general. So the people that you've, that you're thinking for this task force, what powers do they have to suggest others to be included?
Haven't talked about that. I suppose that that task force might ask for that authority. That hasn't come up. We certainly want the input, your input and involvement, and expect, I mean, there are lots of, there are already other groups saying, why can't we be involved? Why can't we be involved? The advocates for social justice will, I certainly expect, will have more representation than any other group on this. So it's, and all of these, all the task force meetings will be public, as will the meeting when they make a recommendation to council, and council discusses it and, you know, hopefully, yes.
Brad, this is Anthony. What other groups are you talking to?
I'm just, we're just getting emails from different groups saying, why aren't we involved in this? Why can't? So it's just been a variety of people. Probably some of them aren't real groups, but saying, we should be part of this.
I think, this is Nicole. I think, you know, like Stacy said, we're glad that it's being started on, but the conversation started without us already, is what it feels like, and we've been here putting in the work and the fight and the time and research, and I think as soon as possible, we need to have control and power in that, say, equally, if not more, to get this group put together. And I definitely agree that it should be a lot of people from advocates for social justice and the people on the front line that have been working for this.
And I just want to say one other thing, just about this concept of like putting together a task force and having public meetings, and, you know, it sounds very much like how things have been done traditionally, and we know that that does not work, right? In the past, that has not worked, which is why we're in the situation we're in today. And so there's an urgency, sorry, there's a lot of background noise here, I hope you can't hear it. There's a sense of urgency now because of all that's going on and because of the movement we have here in Cedar Rapids that really is demanding for change quickly and in a different way than we've seen it done in the past. And so that is also my reservation with having this task force. It sounds very dilatory. It sounds like it's going to take a really long time to get things done, when, as I said, we have already started to put this together as a group.
We are your task force. Simple as that. We are the task force. Why aren't we the task force? I feel like we're adding another layer of bureaucracy into the middle of this, and we don't need to do that.
I don't think you represent the entire community, so that's why we want to have several of your members involved in this. We want to use what you have, the research you've done, your passion.
Correct.
They're passionate too. And I'm sorry, we're going to have a difference of opinion here. These are city policies. I'm elected official, council are elected officials, the city, the community has elected us to serve, and we're trying to do the very best we can. And I hope that when you hear the details of this task force and see who's on it, that you will be at least more comfortable with it, and it will have a pretty short timeline to get this recommendation back. We want this to move very quickly, but we also want to do it right. And there are a lot of issues.
Are you suggesting that you wouldn't be doing it right by negotiating with this task force? Or with us as a task force, Brad?
That's an option. That was an option.
What's that?
That was certainly an option.
Did you, you must not have heard my question.
Yes, I said that was, that's certainly, that was certainly an option.
I guess I'm confused. It was an option that you've rejected. Is that what you mean?
I, we, these are tough, tough times, tough decisions, and I'm sorry, we're just gonna, we're just gonna disagree on how this is being handled. But as I just mentioned, I think when you, when you see the task force and its task and the timeline, I think you will be, you won't be as concerned. I think you'll be, hopefully, some of you will be pleasantly surprised, and again, some of you will be part of that.
It's concerning that, one, this has to be a surprise. It's also concerning that you think it's a good idea that you are going to develop a task force that will make recommendations to council about one of the most important goals that were put forward by this group without seeking this group's input to do that. I think when this gets communicated, Brad, to the public, the public that you and I represent is going to have a big problem with that, and the credibility of this group is going to be impugned because you haven't sought the input of the group that is driving this effort in the city that you represent. I just, I don't even, I can't imagine how that registered as anywhere close to a good idea.
Do, who, have you, the groups picked, the group has been selected? Do you, do we?
Hasn't been finalized, no.
I also want to say that this does not have to be adversarial, right?
I don't want it to be adversarial.
Right.
Right, right. Nobody does. I mean, the goal is that we're all working together on these issues, and we're coming to agreements, and it's, we're making fantastic change, right? So I don't, I sense this tension, and I, nobody wants that. Really, nobody wants that tension. The point is, we literally are meeting multiple times a week for the past however many weeks. We are working really hard on these issues, and so to... Like I said, to then hear you, like a slap, we have literally been reading, we've been reading reports. We've been studying CRB. So, you know, I hope that you understand how we feel.
And that's why I've said...
Yes, that's a good point. You've got a group of black leaders in this community and young black leaders begging a white mayor to be a part of a process to determine the specifics of seven demands for social justice and police reform. One, that's not a good look, and two, it's a bit insulting. I just, I'm just struggling. I'm struggling with this here, Brad, like man to man.
Stacy, I heard the mayor say that he wants these people to be a part of the process.
Okay, but we're not a part of the process, Dale. If the process means in a week,
this group is going to find out what you guys came up with, that's in no way being a part of the process.
Explain to me how that's part of the process.
We're just trying to put a committee together.
Okay, if you haven't come up with it...
Dale, I understand that, but explain to me how it's part of the process if this group is going to find out what committee you decided on in a week. How is that being part of the process?
Can I ask a question as well? So if what I'm hearing is correct, you know, you're, I'm hearing that we're going to be pleased and surprised with who's on, you know, who's in the group, but I'm also hearing that it hasn't been selected. So if we're here asking and saying how important it is to be a part of this, and you don't have this group selected, why can't we be brought in at this point to work together for what that group looks like?
I'm sorry, I misspoke. The task force members are being recruited. If we, if the council, which I expect it will, forms, agrees to form a task force, are you willing to serve? So some of you who are on this call, if you haven't been contacted yet, you will be contacted.
How is it decided who out of this group is acceptable for the task force and who's not?
Pardon? I'm the, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm the elected official. I'm the one who has to answer to the citizen.
And you answer, and you answer to us, Brad.
Agreed, and so, and everyone else.
Right. What black people are you talking to? Like to Rachel's point, how are you, how are you coming up with who you're going to recruit for the task force?
You know, I really, this conversation is really not going in a good direction.
What'd you say, Dale?
I just don't feel good with the direction this is going.
You don't feel good with your citizens asking you how you're coming up with a task force?
I'm just trying to do the right thing here. And you guys, I mean, we're not getting any credit for trying to put a committee together to study these issues that your committee has suggested are important, including some of the members of your committee. That's what we're trying to do.
But you're not getting credit, Dale, because we've already done it.
No, yeah, I appreciate, Amara, and believe me, I do appreciate the work that has been done to this point and the energy and enthusiasm that some of these young leaders are bringing to the table. We want to keep that going.
Who are you, who are you recruiting for the task force? If it hasn't been completed, let's just put the cards on the table. Who are you recruiting? Drop the names right now. Let's just put them on the table. Who are you recruiting?
On Tuesday, some of those people haven't been contacted themselves.
Let us be a part of the selection. Tell us right now who they are. Let us be a part of it. If this is a team, if we're working together, guys, just tell us right now, who are they, and let's talk about it. What's so hard about that? Or is it just me? Like, I don't want to, I don't need to be on the task force. I don't, it doesn't need to be me. I just want to know. Like, we're in the dark with what you're doing. That's the problem.
You won't be in the dark on Tuesday. We'll tell you as soon as it's finalized.
Okay, so I have a quick question. I have a quick question. If you're uncomfortable with saying who's on the task force that isn't on the call, or who you're considering putting on the task force that isn't on the call, are you able to disclose who on this call you're identifying as being on the task force?
Why is this some game? Why do we have to, why do we have to ask these cryptic questions to get insight on a group that's gonna, that's gonna articulate the makeup of these demands that this group came up with, and you passed a resolution saying you support? Why is this, why does this have to be a cryptic game?
Nothing's cryptic. We're gonna give you...
Okay, so tell us, to Anthony's point, tell us who you're recruiting and tell us why this group can't have input.
Maybe we probably, we may agree with everybody. Who knows? We may agree with everybody.
We know what we're trying to do.
What's that?
Stacy knows what we're trying to do.
What?
Who knows?
You tell me, Dale.
Who knows what we're trying to do?
Yeah.
You tell me, Dale.
You say Stacy knows?
Yeah, you, I mean, you've known we're trying to put a group together. This is what we're trying to do, you know?
Okay, so we want to be a part of the process, Dale Todd.
That's great that you're putting a group together. Let's talk about who they are. We may agree with everybody.
We have to, we have to, we have to talk about it with our council first. We have to get buy-in from our full council first. That's the first, that's the most important.
This is absolutely ridiculous, Dale Todd, and you know this. You know it. You know this is ridiculous.
No, it's not ridiculous. Yeah.
You know it. Everybody on this call knows it too.
We obviously disagree.
Yeah.
We do, I guess, Brad.
Where are we going from here?
I'm just wondering if we can't talk about the names, if we could talk about the process of who, how you're deciding on the names, and also why that this group isn't involved in that process.
We've already talked about that, Rachel. We've come up with a group. You'll, it's a really strong group with a number of people giving us input.
If you don't like the group, you can say it. I mean, that's, we're fine with that.
Yeah, I get that we would be able to say that we don't like the group. But at this point, what would that do? Because you haven't included us in choosing who this group is. We're not allowed to know who they are until you release it to everyone. It just, I don't understand what us disagreeing after they've already been chosen is going to change. That's why we want to like start now.
Would it be helpful to get a sense of generally what structure you're talking about? So how many people are we talking about? And then from there, perhaps the, from the standpoint of the advocates for social justice, you know, is that half the group, three-fourths of the group? Can we, can we discuss it in those general terms?
I would compare it to other commissions. I think we're looking for a broad cross-section. That would include gender balance. That would include young and old, predominantly African-American. I think in order to get a good cross-section, you're probably looking at about 17, 18 people, somewhere around there.
This is, I can't even believe this is a real thing happening right now.
Yeah, it's really, it's bizarre. But so, once you have this secret task force...
It's not a secret task force. It's a community.
Well, right now, it's secret.
You won't tell us on the call. It's not secret, but you won't tell anybody. So what is, what's the definition of secret?
Right, it's secret until you all decide that it's not secret. And so what is the, what's the call for this task force? So I under, you know, could you talk a little bit about the timeline and what the instructions will be?
I think we're still developing those, Amara. The timeline, I think, in order to be fair, you know, you're looking at a committee that would be able to do research, combine it with additional research that's out there that other folks are doing, but in order to add a sense of urgency to it, you're looking at anywhere from 45 to 90 days to have a final report.
To pick the task force?
Just...
No.
No, that, that's the, that's the timeline the task force has to produce a report.
Does that, makes sense, Amara? Is that workable? They meet, once, they meet every two weeks?
Oh, Jesus Christ.
How on earth...
Doesn't sound like...
How on earth can 100 people in Des Moines pass a damn law in 24 hours, and we gotta wait 90 days? Help me understand that. I'm not saying I know the...
What did they pass? What did they pass?
They passed a, they passed a choke resolution in 24 hours, Dale.
We're not doing choke, we're not talking about choke resolutions, Anthony. We're talking about civilian review.
It doesn't take 90 days. You know that.
And I just want to say, you're talking 40, 45 days, meeting twice a week, and what I'm trying to explain, I think I said this like 100 times, but, you know, we have been meeting for 45 days, or much longer than, much more than two times, I'm sorry, than every two weeks. We're meeting multiple every week, and we have been for a number of weeks. So all that I'm suggesting is that a lot of the work that your task force is going to have to do, we have done already. So we're weeks ahead of where your task force will be, just starting off fresh. So there's, there's that.
George Floyd was murdered one month ago, if anybody's wants to know, and several of the United States' largest cities have moved much faster than we were even able to get to this secret surprise task force that you guys are coming up with, that I guess we'll find out about on Tuesday, by the way. So I just, I applaud our diligence here. I mean, maybe it's an effort to be super really careful so that we get everything right, as you suggested, but it, it just seems like this is going to play out in a way that isn't going to be constructive, because we have a mayor and a city councillor who thinks that instead of working with black leaders in this community to together co-create a committee to do this work, the mayor and city councilman Dale Todd are just going to surprise everybody on Tuesday.
You've created the narrative already, Stacy. You're the one going down the...
I'm sorry?
You've created the narrative already.
Well, Dale, you tell us, what is the narrative?
The narrative, Amara, I'm asking you to have some confidence in us, to give us two, three days to put the parameters of this committee together, which will include members of your group, and we all have trust and the ability of this committee to get the work done in a way that we're all going to feel good with and be proud of. And what that takes, I'm not sure of the timeline. A lot of it's going to be determined by the committee. It's, we're not telling them when to have things done or not done. A lot of this is left up to them, but it's going to be good people that you're with, you know, and you trust in. I'm asking you to take some, you know, to take a leap in faith in us, that we're trying to get all cylinders of City Hall going in the same direction to get this thing done.
Dale, you're asking us to trust you, but you won't share any names with us, and also, you're asking a group to trust you, that we invited you to be a part of this process, and then you left. But we're supposed to have trust and faith in you at this point.
That way I can carry this, this charge to the council like I have done these last two days. I want you to know that some council members don't want a committee. I mean, they don't, you know, and so I gotta...
We don't either. We don't either, Dale. You got one.
You know?
Do you mean some council members don't want a task force, or they don't want the review committee?
We do now. And we want review. They all want, they all want both. They're there now.
But that's not what you just said.
I just, they're all there now, okay? They're all there now, okay? The last two weeks, I mean, the last two days, I've been working, trying to convince people that this is in the best interest of the city to do what we're trying to do here.
That the task force and that you're selecting is the best?
Yes.
Not the review committee?
And that we're, they're interested in a review committee. It's just got to take us time to get through this. That's all. The department's got to do some stuff. Legal's got to do some stuff, but I can guarantee you, they want to see that.
May I ask a question, please? Sorry, I was on mute. You have a couple of days left, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, and you are pulling together a task force to then select, or then to help select the citizens review board. What I've heard today is that you do not have those selections. You haven't, you haven't finished that process yet. You'll know Tuesday. So you're still in that process. I heard recruiting. We're still recruiting. Is it possible that you grab a couple of people out of this group right now and say, let me bring you up to speed so that you can, you take us to the finish line with who these people are? Is that too much to ask right now, today, to grab a couple of people right now to help you finish this process? If you don't want to say, tell us all who it is, then let a couple of our sergeants be in the room, in the war room with you. Is that too much to ask?
Anthony, this is Brad. Let me, let me talk with Dale in chief and Jeff, and we're not going to, we're not going to be able to tell you on this call, but we'll, I'll get back to you on that yet today. The...
For the record, I don't want it to be me, so just for the record.
The community task force will not be selecting who serves on the citizens review board. They're just going to say, how, what's the structure behind, what's the best way to put together a citizens review board that will...
Right, okay.
Whatever.
I think that's great.
Nothing to do with selecting who ends up...
I think that's great. I think that's great, Brad. So let... I think that's great. I think that's great, Brad. So let me take you back to, to Amara's point. You have people who've already been studying this.
And we hope they'll be on the task force.
Can they help you choose? Can they help you choose the task force? Can they help you choose it? It doesn't need to be all of us. I understand if you're concerned about confidentiality, what have you. So if you want to take that by the end of the day, that's great, and get back to the group. But I, I would ask respectfully that, that a couple of these folks on this call help take you to the finish line with your, your preliminary selection process. I think that's only fair.
We'll have that discussion quickly.
All right. Thank you, sir.
So, so Anthony, if, if we, if the city pulls the name together and then has a discussion with your group and you find the individuals to be acceptable, that, that would work for you?
I'll defer to Leslie and Nicole and, and the team here, but I, I think we need to be a part of that, yes.
So this, so this team right now, that's on this call, is the negotiating committee and comprises the research committee for the Citizens Review Board that has been, that has been meeting. So it, if that is acceptable, if that's acceptable to you, Jeff, I'm sorry?
I was just saying, there are some other- There are people on our research committee that aren't represented here, is all I'm-
Right, right. So if, if that deal, Jeff, that it sounds like you and Anthony are, are trying to arrive at-
I don't know if it's up to me to arrive. I'm just trying to get some clarity and see what common ground we can find.
No, I hear you. I hear you. Nothing's set in stone. I know you guys got to go back in conference after this, but, but the point I'm getting at is, we would be happy to bring in the remaining folks on our research team who aren't represented on this call, and either talk through that with you, or, or those folks on the research team and this negotiating team could be the representatives from ASJ.
So you guys go back and get that some thought?
Sure. Just so I, just so we know, who's on the research team then?
Let me pull that up.
Is everyone here?
Yeah.
Amara, you actually sent out that Zoom invite. Can you look at that email? It's-
It should be everyone here and then Chuck Crowley.
Okay, well, let, let the mayor and Dale, Chief and I talk a little bit and see what we can come up with, and then regroup.
And I believe Dedrick was also on the research team. So Dedrick doing as well.
Yes. I'm sorry, I was on mute. I was saying that. Yes.
All right, what's next?
So is the arrangement, is that the city manager Dale, the chief, and the mayor are going to conference sometime after this call and get back to Anthony about whether or not that arrangement we've just suggested, marrying this negotiating team with our research team to be a part of the task force? That, that's what you guys are going to talk about, and get back to Anthony with.
How, how many people is that, just so we understand?
I don't need to be on it. That's what I was saying. If you, if you guys don't want it too long.
Eleven people.
Right. I thought it was to, to reach out to a few of the people and, and, and give them the information that we have to date, not, not eleven people, but-
Well, I'm sorry, Brad. Can you, can you say that again? I, I didn't quite understand what you were saying.
I thought Anthony, I thought Anthony's was asking us to share the information with a few individuals from this group, not the entire group.
That is, that-
No, we don't want to just know who you guys are thinking of. We want to either be the group or, or have significant influence on who sits on it. We, I don't think Anthony cares about finding out just the names of people. Anthony, am I, correct me if I'm wrong?
That's correct. I'm saying that there, there should be a couple of people from this group that are deciding who that task force is. Not that we're blessing it or not blessing it. We should be a part of the selection. And if you don't need to, if you don't want to share, it sounds like you already have some names. I don't know if you do or not. If that's the case, then we need a couple of people from this group to, to be a part of that selection, and we need to back the truck up. That's all I was saying. If you don't want all of us right here, then at least we should be represented, and a, a couple of us should be represented to make that decision on who, who's going to be on your task force, before you even make the decisions. Does that make sense?
Yes, I'm sorry. My, that's what I thought you were indicating.
Does that make, am I, guys, am I, am I talking out of turn? Nicole, Leslie?
No. I think you're right. And I think, you know, what we would love is for all of us to be there and be involved. It doesn't sound like that's going to happen. So yeah, I think Anthony, that's a compromise. That's the best we can get, is that we need some representation from this group.
I'm with you too, Anthony. That makes complete sense.
And ma, maybe this is a stupid question, or maybe no one just wants to answer it, but what is the hesitation utilizing our research group, the group that has been studying this? Is it, is it that some of us are too divisive, or, you know, like, I guess, I, I guess I just want to understand what, what, where is this? Is it a control issue? You know, what, what is the hesitation in allowing us to be a part of the selection process, or even just utilizing us as your task force, considering we have done a lot of the research already?
A diverse group of age, race, gender, low, city of town. So, I mean, I know that that's what you were trying to get at, Brad, you wanted to have a diverse group.
Yep.
We, this is a very diverse group here. And so, to Amara's point, you know, I, I respectfully would like to know why, why you don't just say-
We, I, I'm going to say this again. We, we absolutely, I, I respect your passion. You know, what you guys have done and got the city to do is terrific, and we're all on board to move this forward. We need to have, in my view and others, a broader base of citizens involved, yet absolutely have members of this group that are working this. And other people who will be in this task force are also, have been involved in this.
So are we good with the compromise here, that before you decide who this group is going to be, there are going to be a couple of people from this call who are going to help make that decision?
And get back to the, get back to-
I gotta go talk about that. Okay. That should be a no-brainer, but okay.
I have another question.
Go ahead, let me.
Okay, in what sense, I know you keep saying that you need a more diverse or broader group of people. In what sense aren't we diverse, or, I'm just, what more do you need, is my question?
There's, there's no answer to that. There can be no answer.
Well, I, okay. I, I'm, I'm gonna, as Dale mentioned, I'm trying to do my very, as do you, as you are. And I think that there, that your group and the members of your group are terrific and need to be involved in this. But there are other people who not, are not in your group that also need to be involved in this, to get broad community support for what this ends up being. So other people-
You know, nobody on this call disagrees with that, Brad. We don't think we're the end-all, be-all necessarily, but we just think that the reason we're having this conversation right now is because Advocates for Social Justice made seven demands. The chief demand was the Citizens Review Board. We bird-dogged and petitioned until you guys made a public pronouncement. And now we're here, and you're essentially telling us, thank you, and we will show you what we came up with to address the most important stated issue for your group. We'll come up with that, and we'll, we'll let you know. We'll let you know on Tuesday, or whatever day you're going to. You understand that that's exactly what's happening, right?
No, it's not accurate at all.
Okay, well then, well then, help me understand what's actually happening.
Members of this group, your group will be involved in this process. That has to happen, and it will happen.
What was inaccurate about what I said?
That we're just going to come up with a process of a Citizens Review Committee or Board, and, and, and that's what's going to happen. No, there's going to be a whole-
No, 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 that is exa, how, if we have no input right now, and who constitutes the committee, Brad, how is what I said inaccurate? You're going to show us on Tuesday, right?
Because I, you, I thought you said that we're going to develop a Citizens Review policy or Board without your input. I thought that's what you-
No, the committee, the task force, no. And if I said that, I misspoke. So, i, i, if, 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 if that is corrected, is everything else I said accurate?
Other than the fact that we, again, might, we feel comfortable because you're going to have several of your committee members, your Advocates for Social Justice, as part of this whole process, and, and hopefully we're going to be able to build on and use the research they've done. We're excited about that. That, to the extent that if we agree to, to have this conversation with Anthony tonight, and, and have a couple of people look at this list, then, then, then it's, there's a, it's a slight change in what you said.
Well, we haven't confirmed that yet. So hopefully, you know, hopefully that is what happens, that you, that you pull a good amount of people from this group to be involved, and that's how it should-
Hopefully what happens is that we are able to influence who is on the group, because if, if you're saying that what I just said is true, which is that the Advocates for Social Justice, who put together several peaceful demonstrations in this town that mirrored peaceful demonstrations all over this country, that came up with seven demands, that bird-dogged the council until the council passed a resolution publicly stating your support, and now we've arrived at the point where we're ready to talk with our elected representatives and come up with equally agreed-upon recommendations for a Citizens Review Board, that we're at this point, and you're telling us now, after all of this work, that you are going to come up with a group to actually do that work, and you're going to let us know on Tuesday. So, is anything I said inaccurate?
Yeah, it's inaccurate, because I've said over and over and over again that members from your group will be part of that task force.
How is it inaccurate, Brad? I'm not disputing that fact. I'm saying you're going to, you're going to let us know on Tuesday what you, what you came up with.
The members of the task force, which will include members from your group, yes, we, we did not ask for your input on. That's accurate.
Right, okay. I, I thank you for that, for making it crystal clear.
Anthony, you're on mute.
Let, let me offer this to everybody on this call, and I'm asking you, Brad, you haven't selected these people. Or I think I heard somebody say there's about sixteen or seventeen people. Is that, did you say that, Dale? Something like that? Dale on the call?
Yeah. That would, that would be a good for us. That would be a good number.
Okay. We'd like fifty percent of those to come from this group. Can we give you the ten people we want?
No.
You, why are you selecting our people? Why can't we select? Tell us how many-
To, to put together a policy for the city of Cedar Rapids.
I understood. I'm saying you're, this group, it doesn't have to be all of us, but what I'm saying, Brad, is we know from this group of people who's best suited to be on your, be on this task force. You don't know that. You don't know, let me finish, please, let me finish, please. You don't know who's been doing the work in the, in the twenty-plus people we've been meeting with. You don't know who that is, but you've decided to select people from our group. What, what we, what I'm asking you to do is tell me how many, if you guys know about how many people you have, and if you want to negotiate that, tell us how many people from this group are going to be there, and let us send you the people that we want on that team. We know the strengths of the individuals here. We know what, what folks have been doing the research on this, and I'm going to say again, not Anthony. I, I don't think I'm best suited, but my point is, we know on this, we know who in this group is best suited to be on that task force. Is that a healthy compromise? You don't pick our people. Just tell us, we want you to grab seven people. That's dual decision-making. That's you deciding how many people on the group, on the task force, and that's us having some control over which of our representatives are going to be on that group. How's that for compromise? I think that's fair.
Sounds like a good compromise.
I think that's fair. We know on this, we know who in this group's been doing the research, and we know who can be, who can add strength to your task force. So just tell us how many? Seven, eight, six? I think that's fair. Does anybody, anybody else want to comment on that?
I think that's extremely fair.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So Brad, you guys have got seventeen. I think I heard seventeen. I'm, I'm using that number until I, I don't know. So about, based on your already pre-planned thought, how many of us were on that group? Just give us the number, and then we'll tell you, we'll, we'll tell you who those five people should be, or six people, or seven, however many you had. How about that?
Not ready to make that decision, the change in what our plans are, but we will, as I said-
We'll discuss that.
Okay, so, so that's fine. You guys could discuss it. I, I'm telling you right now, when you call me, if you're calling Anthony, the answer's no, until I talk to this team. So you can call me tonight and say, we've selected A, B, C, D out of this group, but I'm going to say, not until I talk to this team. We don't, I don't agree with that. I'm telling you right now, if you call me tonight, and you're not allowing us to select our people, I'm going to tell you no. Let me go back to my group and see if the names you gave me is approval from this, from this organization here. And make sure, and maybe, you know what? Maybe we get lucky. Hey, maybe the six people you've already selected are the six people we would have selected. I don't know. But I don't think you should have control, if you want to have control of the process, Brad, and you want to have control over putting this task force together and deciding it's going to be seventeen people, or however many, at minimum, Brad, at minimum, man-to-man here, you should allow us to tell you, based on the weeks of work these guys have been doing, who, who the people are that can add the most strength to that team. That's teamwork, Brad.
And respectfully, I don't think that anyone you would invite to that task force would agree unless we had the approval of the group.
Absolutely. That's absolutely right. I mean, this, this group is lock, set, solid. And I just, for larger context, because I know some people on this call get it, and maybe others don't, but, and, and I mean this sincerely from the bottom of my heart, with no malice intended at all, this is a genuine heartfelt comment. What we are all trying to do here gets at the root of systemic oppression that's been faced by people of color, specifically black people in this country. And you've got a group that's representing black leaders and black people in this community, like, trying to, trying to, trying to engage in a process that will, the outcome will result in meaningful police reform. And this group here is begging and pleading with the mayor to be a part of that. This group comprised of black people, begging and pleading to be a part of that. That is what's happening right now. And that, it's, it's fascinating to me that anybody in government finds this arrangement acceptable.
It feels like being disenfranchised, right? It feels like having your power taken away from you, and you not being allowed a voice, or a, it's really, you know, as, as I, as I sit here, it hurts. It really does. It really hurts to know that we've been doing all this work, and the only reason we are here today is because of the work that we have all been doing for, for weeks now, and for years, frankly. And, and, and to be having this conversation is, oh, it's demeaning, and, you know, is, it is. This is the root of, of systemic racism. I mean, it is like what it looks like.
All right, I really apologize. But I'm going to sign off, because I bet-
I'll wait for your call, Brad.
Yeah.
Whenever you call me, the answer is no, until I, until I get the approval from this group, because I'm not going to make that decision.
You're leaving after those two comments, Brad?
It sounds like people were expressing their pain, and-
I don't know what else to say. I've listened. I understand. There's not a perfect way to do this. We're doing our very best.
I, I just-
And we'll, we're taking-
Wow.
-this information.
Wow.
Okay. That's your, that's your decision.
Wow. We want, so we want change in this community, but change dealing- We want so we want change in this community, but change dealing with African Americans, but it's your guys' way or the highway. You had a group of African Americans here telling you that this this is literally this is what systemic oppression is. This is textbook example of it.
Yeah.
This is it.
You have a group of people who love the city, love this community the same way that you do, pleading for you to listen to us and try to understand, and you want to sign off.
No, I'm listening and I do understand. We're getting the same we've for an hour, we're talking about the same issue. We have a difference of opinion here, but hearing all these comments, we're we're going to talk tonight and see if there's something more we can do to accommodate those.
I think that. This is Jeff. It's probably better that we sign off. For me, I I don't want to sign off because I'm upset. I I'm I'm not upset. I'm listening and trying to learn. I I just think this is such a big issue that we need to have a discussion amongst ourselves because I I think if we can't get beyond this in in my mind, then, you know, it's going to be hard. I mean, we're still going to make progress on the other issues, but I I just think we need to have a discussion, as the mayor said, amongst ourselves and probably with with others as to what the feelings are here.
You do this.
And Jeff, you are you are brilliant. You are a brilliant man, and I'm not being facetious here.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not. I like, you know, I admire your work as a city manager, and I tell you all the time, I admire your savvy. I think you know, I think you know how problematic this this would this can become. I think you know that, Jeff.
Well, we're hearing that and we're we're listening to the discussion. I I don't think we, well, you you told me it was an issue last Friday night, but we thought that by making a commitment to having a very, very open process by including members of this group, that we could get beyond that.
Yeah, so I think, go ahead.
But I think there needs to be more discussion amongst Dale and Brad.
Okay.
And and perhaps other council members to at least make sure that this is where we want to be.
I want you, that's fair. I want you guys to take this with you. I want to be very, very clear about this. And anybody on in our in the ASG, please tell me if I'm off base. The answer right now, guys, collectively is no, we're not accepting this process unless we get to select the individuals from this group to be on that committee. So if you come back to me tonight with names, in fact, in fact, please just don't call me. You know, with all due respect, if you're just going to call me and tell me who you're putting on, I'm telling you right now, the answer is no. You can just email me the names and I'll send that to this team and we'll decide if that makes sense for us or not. And I'm saying it again, Anthony Arrington, this isn't about me. I don't want to be on the team. I don't think I'm the smartest person and I don't think I'm the best suited for that. So if you selected me, and I don't know that you did, I'm 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 turning myself down. I know I have a feeling on this team who needs to be there. So I'm just letting you know that, Jeff, as you guys go back, the answer is no to me. If you're calling me asking if I'm going to approve of your names, the answer is no, unless this group approves. So I that's all I have to say.
Okay, so I so I guess we will wait for Jeff, you, the chief, Dale and the mayor to get together after this and figure something out. And you're going to let Anthony know what you've figured out, if you've if you've changed course, if you had to change your heart or.
You can just email this group.
If the answer still, I'm sorry?
I said they can just email this group. You don't have to call me individually. You can just email the group. You have all of our contact.
Okay, so I'm just so I'm just so I'm clear, you guys are going to get together and talk about something and you'll let us know one way or the other if you've changed your plan or if the plan stays the same. Is that correct?
Brad, you should probably answer that, Brad and Dale.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, well, we probably don't have a whole lot more to discuss, so I guess this group is just going to wait to hear back from one of you on whether or not we are going to be able to be involved in this work. So thank you, guys. Does anybody have anything else?
We still have standing next Friday, three o'clock, if they're right? Is this every Friday at three o'clock?
Correct.
Okay. So just just want to be clear on that in between here. Okay.
Yeah, I I guess I would just say that I I want to make sure everyone knows from the city perspective, and I know this is the city perspective, that we absolutely are committed to making progress on on all these issues and and all the council.
But just maybe but just maybe not with this group, just maybe not with us, though.
Well, maybe not in the form that that.
Right.
Seems acceptable at this moment, but I I know that the commitment's there, the commitment's there from the chief, from myself, and most importantly, for the mayor and council members, we we do not want to be part of any systemic racism. And that is is not us, and it's 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 shown that it has existed, and so no one can deny that. It is it is it is in our culture and in our society, but we want to be part of of the solution and we want to do the right things.
And you know, you know, you know, the textbook definition of racism, Jeff, relates to power and who has it and who doesn't and what those who have it do with it. And you guys are telling a group of black people that we're going to find out on Tuesday what what you guys who have power came up with. You know that, Jeff. I know you know the definition of racism.
Yeah, I understand the definition, but we are trying to be fair and and make the right decisions for this community. And we and we believe very strongly in making these seven demands reality because it's the right thing. And my my intention is not to, you know, address a group of African Americans and 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 fight. We want to be with you and make progress, extreme progress on on these issues. And so that's.
And again, respectfully, you supported you supported those demands.
Yes.
And so that to me implies that you trust this group to make important decisions. And so I think all that we're asking you is to trust us to make the decision of who sits on that task force.
So you take that with you? That's a great, that's a great, great end to mayor. I don't know that we're going to get anywhere else until we hear back from you guys.
Hey, our our group, I just sent you all an email.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
All right, thanks, guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Bye bye.